Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, to the inaugural meeting of the Community and Environmental Services Committee this day. Nearly read it wrong again, I got it wrong last time. Tuesday the 4th of June. Fifty-four twenty-four declarations of any disclosure of community interests. Before we start, when this public, we all need to ask if they have any questions. You are correct.
And he hasn't told me his question, but I know he wants to ask that.
Glenn, do you have any questions?
Can I just say a few things before I do, because of all the events happening with the council? I mean, I think there's only a fraction of this question among the full council, but the problem is, any sensible question just get completely dragged out. So I'm not necessarily, although it's committed, you probably have the most responsibility, this is just directed at the council, because I understand, you know, it is not directed into any individuals, it's not directed at any party, because I know, I understand this process has been going on, it started in the old, the old time configuration. So, you know, this is not aimed at any, any modern individuals, but it was a town council as a whole, so I just want to make that absolutely clear. It's back home again, because actually, I don't come and tweet to here. I've been going there every month, just to kind of monitor the situation. I did complain about the term as I all that, that we done that before. But I've been going back at least every month since, and the fact that, and also I say this as somebody who did three and a half years of weekly volunteering on South Narrows, which is an area of chalk grassland. So although I'm not an expert in these things, I have worked under experts as a manual labourer. So I kind of know a little bit what I'm talking about, but I'm by no reason an expert, like some people sat around the table maybe. It's quite clear to me that since the destruction happened in the spring, which, you know, we may agree to disagree about that, so. All that's happened in between a few months is that nettles are growing up. There are nettles everywhere. Now nettles, if you may or not know, I know this as a gardener, but I'm not an expert, but nettles are a sign of nutrient-rich soil. If they die back, they're just carrying on the cycle. So on a short grassland, like meadows etcetera, it's very important to pull them up, take them away, so that they, you know, eventually the nutrients are kind of taken away from the area. There's also quite distinctly, there's comfrey growing there. Now, again, as a gardener, I know about comfrey. Comfrey goes really, really deep, it pulls all the nutrients up from down below into the surface. And I know that because gardeners use them, they use the leaves to either put in their potato trenches, or in my case, like you can kind of distill the juice out of them, it's just like, you know, tomato fertiliser. So that is like, the fact that they are growing almost everywhere, particularly one area, is very disturbing. There's also a lot of animal, which of course then means that they don't have to bring machines in again to cut them back next year. And there's also goose, goose weed, goose grass, whatever it's like, things that stick to your socks and things. Now, it's hard for me, as a, you know, an unorganized member of these things, that that is not going to come to chalk grassland. There are few tiny little patches, which if you look at them, you say, well, actually, yeah, there's no nettles there and they do appear, but they're very, very tidy. So generally, the whole area does just seem to be like, there's no way this is something that will come to chalk grassland. And my big fear is that, you know, there's no, there's no livestock, for example, to kind of back, which was pretty generally the intention. Now, you're going to tell me, well, we've been let down in the whole process part of, and I understand that, really. I understand getting one of these projects working is difficult, absolutely understand that. But it just strikes me that next year, they're going to bring the termators in again, with the concern, you know, for that process to target them by five, and the whole thing is going to happen again, that the livestock will get pulled in, the nettles grow again, and it's also a waste of money, but I think a secondary to the kind of destruction, in my opinion, of the habitat. So I just wanted to bring that observation to your attention, and if you could let me know what's actually happening in terms of the overall project, and in terms of the way the project goes in the future as well, because I think that's quite promising. For me to understand and to find a proper get onto my meeting, you also said that, as well, so.
Okay.
So thank you very much, thanks for asking that question.
Thanks very much. I'll have a, I have a crack at answering that, and then with your permission, I'll chuck it over to Nick and Terry. You're absolutely right, around Skimmy nettles, they're a colonizing plant, they grow in nutrient-rich chalks, so you're right about that. Equally browse are a colonizing plant. Comfrey, I used to use them on allotment, same as you, a set of tops of liquid water, brilliant nutrient-rich fertiliser that will go anything to thirty metres down. So you're spot on with all of those. The first issue to talk about, really, is the, is the problem that it's been left for so long. And so it's developed a ecosystem, whatever you want to call it, a culture, that isn't chalk grassland. So if there have been colonizing plants on it before, they've formed that nutrient-rich soil, that is part of the problem. The second part of the problem, I think Nick will no more than be on this one, is where you want sheep on there, or a grazing animal, as soon as possible, and for various reasons, it's been difficult. I think that would help the situation, that's what we want to return to. And that's it, over to you, Nick.
Yeah, yeah, so just a sort of update again, Glenn, so we've been working alongside Norfolk Wildlife Trust to try and move forward with the castle mound ancient schedule monument. So one of the biggest problems at the moment is we have a grazer who can supply us cattle, but unfortunately, because of the sort of minority of people that have made it very, very difficult for us to now put sheep on to sites within Fettford, because within the grazing sector, we have been renowned for the amount of dog attacks that we have on our land. So you'll get a further update as I read my report out, but we're kind of working at the moment with the grazer, the current grazer, and some alternative contacts. And we're already now looking to instruct potential security patrols around some of the sites to enforce what we need to enforce on those areas of land, so that we can enable livestock to go back on to them. So it's been a great challenge and a lot of officers' time and hours trying to source grazers, trying to get contacts in. And like I say, we are working behind the scenes quite closely with Norfolk Wildlife Trust to get that site background to where it should be. As you say, a chalkland area, you know, that will have flora and fauna growing on it. And the hope is that, you know, in a couple of years' time, we will be able to survey that area again with the right management, and we'll have those rare species of plants appearing again on the site.
Can I answer that? So, okay.
Yeah, go on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fully excited, in fact, I appreciate you saying that, because there's clearly no livestock left, so that's what we thought the issue is. But I think my main worry is this is just going to go, oh, no. You know, you say, I don't work on chalk grasslands and I don't scrub Basher, and you take stuff away because, you know, and sometimes some areas are a real problem. Sometimes they introduce sheep, which is obviously useful on the south side, it's a massive area. It doesn't much less of a problem, it's a place of the concentration area here, where of course you've got lots of dog walkers, so it's a completely different problem. But as I say, our issue is that, well, if, if they're not being taken away by the livestock or from the group's army anyway, then there needs to be some alternative approach, because we can't keep doing this every year. Because it's not in the cost of the cattle, money, the sales, it's interfering with the, the, the kind of wildlife infrastructure there, a very risky time. Some people worry more about the birds, and some people worry more about insects, and, you know, to me, there's different items for different kind of people's interests. But as I say, my main worry is this is going to happen next year exactly the same way. I think it's for many, this is the third year that they've tried to introduce livestock and it hasn't happened. So it's just like, well, how long is this going to go on before?
I think there is an old Norfolk saying, when asking for directions, which is, I wouldn't start from here. And that's kind of where we are, really. I think it's worth making the effort. It is challenging. I would like to see it return to the state we want it to be in.
Yeah, it's a question that's going to happen.
Does anybody else have any comments? Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
So Basher, declarations of any disposable community interests, should we?
Yes, Chair, I am, because, what is it, item sixty-two twenty-four, Norwich Road Estate Residence has got a small bidding. That item.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Fifty-five, item fifty-five, apologies for absence.
The only policy we received was from councillor Stewart, right?
Thank you. And item fifty-six twenty-four, which will be the minutes, I assume, of the most recent amenities committee. Can we confirm that's a true and correct record?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Terms of reference, item fifty-seven, this is a new one. I think I'm going to ask you, Alan, to explain this, if, if that's, if that's appropriate.
What we've done is, we've gone for, if you had looked in previous years, every committee has very diverse terms of reference. So what we've done this, this time around, is we've actually gone for standardisation. And what I've done is I've taken all the old terms of reference from the various committees and the new functions that this committee is responsible for. I've consolidated them, made them standard, and to the verification, I've just highlighted, you know, for example, on the role of the committee in respect to finances, which you'll see in yellow, instead of having that under every single function, that's now been consolidated as one item there. And that's the function that we've viewed for cemeteries, the allotments, the old amenities, markets etcetera. And then the rest of them are very standard, so I haven't made very many changes, except with a clause about diversity. Let's, can, we, this particular committee, so added, uh, question, give it, must do it. Added, uh, committee respect to those types of functions. And then what we tried to do is to show that the committee's top of the policy, and also committee's offices, the top of the policy, the policies that each of the committees, uh, sees. And then from here, we, once these are approved, we can then set our timeframes, so that over a period of time, we've started reviewing all our policies and give them that data. And that's what I've also changed. In the previous terms of reference, we had roles for different offices, and all I've done is I've just put them under the role of the town clerk. The town clerk is responsible for, for all, supporting the committees, and the town clerk is probably to delegate that to the officer that they, unless we align the terms of reference there. So I hope that that makes sense, and, and will be helpful to the committee in terms of understanding what we do, can, can, cannot do.
Thank you, Alan. Any comments?
Just one question about in the climate and biodiversity section, so it refers to the Climate Emergency Fund, which we obviously agreed to, but I understand that as a one-off fund rather than a rolling thing. So is that appropriate to be within the terms of reference, if it's a kind of a project?
Well, I think what will happen is the projects, every year, each committee will identify projects that need to be funded. So if this committee believe that there would, that there was certain projects that would need to be funded, they would actually include it. And they would identify that as, as the area of focus, and to just be easier, rather than having it under a general amenities type committee, would actually say, this is actually what we want to say that to do. I hope that, that makes sense to you.
At risk of being pedantic, there's just a couple of changes. And so, under the role of the committee in respect of finances, to approve the budget for the Community Environment Committee, not the amenities committee.
I need to say anything for that?
And then in respect of the role of the committee for climate and biodiversity, the adverse impact that it has on climate change and biodiversity loss, I would suggest we're fairly happy about biodiversity loss, but biodiversity loss that we would have an issue with. And then, thirdly, the role of the town clerk, I'm pleased to see the addition there to, for the clerk to identify council officers to attending committee meetings as and when necessary. I would expand that further to include external stakeholders. And I think the presentations we had from Norfolk Wildlife Trust and others were probably some of the best briefings we've had for a very long while. And specifically enshrining that as a role to advise those external people, particularly for this committee where we rely on specialist advice, I think it's quite appropriate.
Thank you.
Just one comment, please, Mr. Chairman, on policies that committees review, reviews and approves. And the next line reads, to ensure that the following policies are reviewed on a regular basis. Would that be perhaps about once every thirty years? Or are we thinking of something a bit more regular than that, a bit more frequent than that? What I'm saying is, if you put a regular basis, it's pretty meaningless. And actually, it's established the first time you do it, so once you commit to that, if we do it twice in a year, we'll have to do it twice in a year forever, because you will have established it. It could if you don't do it for twenty years, that's the rule. So can I suggest that we consider whether one year or two year might be better? I think probably one year's a push, and we've struggled with that in the past. So maybe two or even three, but I think it's better if you have a specific target to go for, rather than just being, well, we're doing the same as we did it last time.
I think that's fair, Colin.
Good comment, just, what we would like to do with each of these policies is actually set where it should be reviewed again. So for example, the allotment policy might only be reviewed every three years, the allotment rules certainly quite few, more regulated in three years, the memorial bench policy would be that, but possibly the market policy guidelines, initially, you might continue to view that every year, because you've established a new function. So have the, the ability to put it into the actual policy when it's approved by this committee, may, may help us define that period. The committee could actually discuss that, rather than just having it as a term of reference. Where the same list, I think, may happen if it's every two years, and it gets done every two years, without thinking why it should be done every two years.
Well, I can only hope that I live long enough to see something established, but somehow it does go with.
But there's a challenge to us.
If I may, I'll beg to differ, but there we go. Thank you. Yes, Matt.
I was going to have a point exactly on what Mike said. On the, on the cemetery stuff, because the cemetery takes money, I think it's important that it's reviewed annually. And one of the reasons we were in a bit of stuck is because we hadn't reviewed it for so long. So that's both the memorial bench policy and the cemetery rules and regulations.
Yeah, just wanted to add, I agree with Matt. One of the ideas around enshrining the policies in the terms of reference is in the past, policies existed, but they weren't owned by a particular committee. So they kind of just sat outside any structure, and that's why they weren't reviewed in a timely manner. So I'm really pleased that Alan's captured them, the relevant policies to each committee, you are responsible for it, and there's a, there's a framework for reviewing them, so I think that's a big step forward.
I'd like to approve of that, in the past, it's rather been left to the full council and effort, and that's why it didn't get done, there was the time. Putting it in the hands of each committee does seem to me to make sense, and to go back to the previous comment, I would just add that if the committee wanted to establish a regular basis, but the name, for each separate policy, that might be a way forward, there may be some that do need more, more frequent review than others. But I think we just need to leave that as something for the committee to come back to. Honestly, I think it's satisfactory as it is.
I wonder if the best way of dealing with this is we, we approve as is, we go away, and then prior to the next committee meeting, which will be a month, I have a chat with Alan, and we'll start putting those proposals forward. Kind of sounds like that. Yeah. Good. So, yeah, so can I, can I propose that we recommend the terms of reference to full council? Yes. That's all, proposal, Max said, thanks very much. I think that's a, I think it's a really worthwhile, and thanks for helping us out with that. Item fifty-eight, this is a good bit, isn't it? Town team manager's report. And to you, Nick.
Okay, I'll try and be a speaker, okay, it's quite a large report, so we're twenty-eight pages this month. So starting off as general, so the town team, again, have been carrying out a range of tasks during the months of April and May. Tasks have included various things like cleaning the chicken of the town street furniture, playparks, public toilets, allotment sites, open spaces, cemetery, as well as the buildings and assets owned by the town council. We've also been working alongside Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council on highways to report issues under their ownerships to help improve the areas of the town. The team has recently grown, and this has seen a further two now team members join the team with different skill sets, including horticultural grounds maintenance, and as well as carpentry and building skills. And we both have John Beard and Matthew Dalton, who's now joined my team, so we've increased by two. Underpasses, so the team have just today been working on the underpasses, and again, continuing to battle with the amount of graffiti that we're experiencing as a town. They've worked on areas including Minister Gate, Lee, Close and Croxton Road underpasses, to assist these to be cleaned and free from graffiti. They've also attended to, again, to the drains where possible. And a full wash down was carried out today to eliminate owners and fouling within these areas. We've also been in contact again with Norfolk highways, to again, to stress them that these assets are their responsibility and they have an obligation to maintain them. We've also further requested to that, that we are now in a new financial, financial year, and that we provide, provide some assistance and improvement from them for the much-needed upgrades to these assets, including the lighting and the redecorations of walls and ceilings. Street lighting, so the team have been working recently, hard assisting residents. We've received a number of reports coming in, in regards to faulty streetlights throughout the town. And we've been helping the residents get these reports and repairs carried out and rectified where possible. These have included a number of lighting columns to St Don's Way, St Martin's Way and Close. We've also built a good working relationship and partnership up with the properties team at Breckland Council. And this will also enable us to ensure that repairs for faulty Breckland-owned assets are carried out as quickly and efficiently as possible. Dog fowls and flytipping issues, so the town team again have been recently installing new waste bins to sites, including the outer areas of Barnham Common, as well as looking to further replace any others within the town's open spaces where these have degraded. The team have also installed several new enforcement signs to various sites, including the Castle Park, Melford Common, Barnham Common. And more will be going up being further, of course, on to the open spaces within the coming month. With these new signs now in place, this will allow our Breckland Council enforcement officers and street wardens to issue fixed penalties to anyone caught offending with either the fly tipping or the waste or not clearing up after their dog with immediate effect. These fines for these areas will now carry a fixed penalty on the spot fine for dog fowling being issued at a hundred pounds. But this can be up to a thousand pounds of legal action being taken where appropriate for further offences where they're committed. Any fly tipping where offenders are caught now carries a thousand pound fine and legal action. The town council town team will continue again to work alongside Breckland Council enforcement team to enforce these ongoing issues within the areas, and those were the kind of areas that we've experienced those issues recently. Street furniture, so the team have again continued to clean and wash and remove graffiti from the town's street furniture and playparks and latest boards as part of the regular ongoing cleaning schedules. New litter bins have recently been installed to the Barnham Common and King Street areas of the town. Dog waste bins have also been started to be replaced where possible, and these are located where no other litter bins are within the area. Further programme of play equipment being washed and cleaned is already being audited. Ahead of playground equipment being refurbished and painted at the various sites going forward. Street lardens and finger posts will shortly be scheduled in for revamping, and these will be freshly painted and secured into place to stop them being pointed in the wrong directions. They continue to report through any litter bins and dog waste bins that need replacement or repairs are in the open spaces and estate areas that are owned by Breckland District Council or Norfolk County Council. We are now continuing to work around and audit all the street furniture. Once repairs and replacements are identified, this will then be scheduled in between the town council, Breckland District Council and Norfolk County Council, and identifying the ones under different ownerships and responsibility for the repairs and replaces to be carried out in order of priorities. The team are continuing to look at the refurbishment of benches at the following locations at the moment, Castle Park, Nannery Drive, the town centre, Riverside Walk, Abbey Water Meadows and Barnham Common. The water drinking fountain, so the Cornell Pfizer Drinking Fountain is now live on the Fettford Marketplace, and it's located at the flower trough, on the old horse drinking trough on the edge of the marketplace. Our contractors have installed a new push tap for residents to use when out in the town and open spaces for fresh access to water. And we encourage residents to fill up their reusable bowls when in the town centre. This is perfect to help you keep cool and hydrated in the summer months. Our hope is that we will encourage members of the community to reuse the plastic drinking bottles to help stop carbon emissions through the use of recycling. The tap was also placed as the final part on to the refill.org website, and this will encourage people to use the facility. Fettford in Bloom twenty-four, so this year's Fettford in Bloom is now well underway. And this has now seen the formation of our new weekly Fettford in Bloom group formed. Our nominations have been sent in for our competition and judging, and we have submitted three categories for Fettford this year. This includes large town category, the cemetery category and the conservation site. We've also nominated the town for seven other additional categories which deserve recognition, including local groups and sites who will be notified if they're in place. This event has also seen a huge work and partnership being set up for the first time in history, working with our local businesses of the town for a positive change for Fettford. Multiple local businesses have contacted and visited by the team members to explain the vision and the impact that working together can have in making a positive difference to the community. We also highlighted overall the tremendous work that the town council are doing to see Fettford prosper and working together with our partner councils for a positive change in future of the town. This year has seen a total of around eleven thousand five hundred pounds so far raised to see Fettford in bloom with colour this year for a positive change. Our hanging baskets have now all been installed to the public areas, and the team have been planting up the flower beds and planters for the town centre areas with our contractors and the cemetery site. The Fettford in Bloom group currently meets once a week and works alongside our town team and helping to focus, maintain and transform neglected areas of our town that need some tender loving care. The group currently meets for around two hours from ten till twelve, and this has seen a group size of around three to six local residents giving up their time for giving it back to the community, their time and expertise in making a difference to Fettford. All equipment is provided as well as refreshments, and it's a great way for those residents in our community looking for a group to join, where they can socialise and chat and make a difference. And as one group member told us, it's about coming, coming together and combating loneliness, and a chance for like-minded residents to chat and socialise. We thank those members of the community for their hard work and dedication in making a difference to our town. As interest is now growing, this could see the group further develop to more meets throughout the week. And more information will be released in due course. Sites that have recently been tackled and weeded by the group include the NCC-owned bus interchange, the NCC-owned Riverside Walk pedestrianised areas, the NCC-owned King Street pedestrianised areas, Tanna Street and Gildall Street, the BBC-owned car parks. Discussions are already processing to seek agreements from both Breckland District Council and Norfolk County Council on the permissions to be set up and granted where possible to help with the maintenance of the key flower beds and borders owned by them, so that these can be also transformed to beautify the town further with their support. Fettford in Bloom competition, so the Fettford in Bloom competition twenty-four is well underway. At present, we are requesting for more nominations for this year's competition. We have now extended the competition nomination closing date by another two weeks to allow those nominations to still continue and come in, and the new cutoff date is Friday the fourteenth of June. The judging will then take place, the week commences on the Monday the twenty-fourth of June, followed by awards presentation event for winners and guests on Friday the nineteenth of July. This event has been kindly again being sponsored by Sign Along Removers, and we see the four categories below judged for nominations. The best front garden, best business floral display, environmental champion, and the best environmental project. But again, we encourage people to put those nominations in, as at present we are struggling. Town centre issues, the town team have recently been working hard alongside the volunteers and weeding the key focus areas and routes into the town. We continue to email and contact both Norfolk County Council and highways on these key issues to highlight before and after situations we are tackling, which is their key responsibilities for our town, which should be provided. We also continue to report any defects into assets owned by Breckland Council and Norfolk County Council for them to, for their attention, so that these repairs can be carried out and completed as soon as possible. The Fettford bus interchange has been another challenging site for us as a council, and an area of continuous complaints from the public, businesses and bus operators. Again, we contacted Norfolk County Council on a regular basis to highlight these key issues, and recently officers and the team met with Norfolk County Council officers to discuss how this site can be maintained and cared for going forward as part of Fettford, and one of our main assets which is used by our residents. Again, it was discussed and decided that only, the only way potentially that this site could move forward and see a positive change is to work closely together as councils in partnership to deliver a service to the public that was much needed alongside our volunteers. One way to do this was to talk and vision and compile a paper and project bid for a key transport network into our town, which many see each day using these facilities, as well as anyone One way to do this was to talk and vision and compile a paper and project bid for a key transport network into our town, which many see each day using these facilities as well as anyone passing through as a visitor to the town. Major persuasions and major persuasion was then used to getting Norfolk County Council on board with the whole Fethford in Bloom vision and the major changes have attracted more people into our town to help the town prosper and to get people talking about Fethford again. Norfolk County Council then agreed that they would pay for the planters and a new revamp of the interchange flower bed areas, as well as a small short stay car park area for our Imblyon volunteers and residents to help maintain through the Fethford in Bloom group. This has now seen again a further six thousand pounds allocated and contributed to Fethford from Norfolk County Council. The bus interchange will soon be a splash of colour and bus operators, including local businesses have again come on board to sponsor these for twenty twenty four as part of the town's vast improvement works. Public convenience, so the public convenience has currently been looked at for improvements to services and continues. A discussion took place again with our current contractor and the facilities were supposed to receive a needed deep clean and cleanse to walls, floors and high level areas, especially the cemetery wear. We was assured that this had been taken place and as officers we went out and looked at these sites and we was not convinced and not happy with the overall condition. So we have continued to lobby our current contractor to get these areas up to scratch. Public convenience hours of operation at each site have now been extended to reflect the summer season. This will see the following sites operation at the times for each as well as the QR code system being live and feedback monitoring taking place for each of these facilities. Sadly, following recent interviews being held for a second time round, we were let down by our candidates that applied for the position when we advertised out. We have recently approached a recruitment agent to look at the recruiting on behalf of us. With the listed skill set being emphasised for the right potential candidate, when selected, they will be invited for an interview by the team for the role. I can update further to that now, but I've received further correspondence from the recruitment agent and we will be interviewing this Friday for a new position. Grazing of open spaces, so the grazing of open spaces has proved challenging at present and we are currently in talks with our current grazer who is struggling to provide sheep for the various sites due to the previous nature of dog attacks to livestock. Sadly, this was caused by a small minority and has presented a larger scale issue for us here at town council level, how we manage the sites going forward at present. We are continuing to work hard to sort the grazer and are now exploring some other alternative options for the sites currently. The town team continue to replace rotten poists wherever these are found and to help maintain the sites where cattle are grazing already. So Fredericks Wood and Woodlands on Fairfield, so recent works have been carried out to Fredericks Wood. This work has also seen the perimeter trees significantly improved, as was recommended by a tree surveyor and experts to maintain the woodland and the residential area joining the site. The town town team and volunteers have continued and will continue to carry out the tree and back of vegetation along the boundary line as much as possible alongside the works going forward to assist each individual house backing onto the woodland site, following a numerous amount of complaints. Sands Two, so the Sands Two speed machine has recently been installed within the Castle Street area and this has gathered data for a period of four weeks. This was placed leading up to the recent school holidays that took place. The Sand Two has now been returned back to the Cloverfields estate for a period of four weeks. And further public requests have also been made for the Sands Two speed awareness machine to be installed at Nuns Bridges and Mill Lane areas, as well as Hurfway, which now will be further investigated due to reports of speeding cars and traffic. The data wise retrieval will be passed over to Norfolk Highways and Norfolk Police and the local stag group through councillor McDonald. Playparks, so recently officers have been looking at the different ways in which playparks can be adapted or improved to include inclusivity and accessibility to each individual site. We recently visited the town's eleven playparks with a playpark designer to discuss and source information on how present playparks that we have are currently set out. During the visit, we were highly commended as a council at how most of the sites already have an element of inclusivity developed into them with a certain amount of play equipment. This will be devised and released over the coming months that highlight on which pieces of equipment are designed for inclusive play and that will be carried out on our social media. As recommended during the visit, there is always room for future improvements and developments and one key aspect is better accessibility into some of the sites, although some do presently have this. Where equipment is becoming tired and will in time need to be replaced, we have developed a plan to looking include further equipment that is more inclusive and will be more accessible to all, considering those two key aspects, inclusivity and accessibility. The town team will shortly play a key part in cleansing of the play equipment at Suncit and will start on a playpark by playpark basis, working around each one. Welcome signage is a key aspect and we are already looking into braille and colourful signage as well as potential sign language motifs for these to also to go forward to connect further within our community. The town team have also recently qualified for their roster operational training. This now means our town team are qualified to carry out more extensive inspections on the equipment every three months alongside their routine weekly checks. And it will also mean that they will be able to carry out more complex maintenance and repairs and tasks to the equipment, therefore saving on repairs where previous contractors were used for the playparks. King Square and Street Furniture, so the town team will again be washing down shortly the concrete surfaces and benches at King Square. The planters have also been recently planted and the wooden benches and long plants will soon receive a revamped coat of stain to enhance the area further. Town council, community litter picks, so following on from the success of the Keep, Write and Tidy campaign over this year, the town team reached out and made connections with a local company who were renewable energy focused. As a town team, building exercise, we organised a litter pick for the Barnham Common and the perimeter areas where a large group of thirteen staff were involved in taking part in a big cleanup. We are now looking ahead and planning in the next big Fethford community litter pick. And this we hope again to run alongside and work in partnership with both Breckland Council services as well as local groups and businesses. Other works the team have also recently carried out include cleaning of the footpath for permanent highway signage, removal of abandoned highway signage no longer in use, removal of run down the street furniture fixings including sign frames, cleaning of public areas of vegetation, removal of fly postering, pothole repairs, facilities checks, allotment clearances. Our contractors also recently carried out the much needed repairs to Gentles Bridge following the railings and brickwork again being vandalised. Nuns Bridges footbridge, footbridge run alongside the main Nuns Bridges. The application is now in with Breckland and sitting with their planning team. This is currently at the design stage for the wooden footbridge, which will make safe crossing for public run alongside the Nuns Bridges. The photo below shows the committee of footbridge that is being proposed for the area. The tree at Mill Lane, so we've had a lot of issues with the tree currently across the river at Mill Lane. Our contractors will now be clearing the fallen tree across the river in the coming weeks. As the works were about to take place, what we found that a goose had taken the opportunity to use the area of vegetation close by to nest in Fletcher Young. Once the land has dried out following the heavy recent rainfall, the machinery will be brought onto site and the tree will be removed as soon as possible from the river location. Pictures of the goose and young. Fethford's first green bus shelter, so investigations are continuing at the moment and into Fethford's first green bus shelter, unquote, are currently being obtained. Investigations with other partner councils, with land permissions and planning are now also being investigated for what will be needed to get this project underway for the near future. And future updates will become available as this progresses more. Moving on to the conservation volunteers, so the volunteers have all recently been working alongside David, the town team throughout the months of April and May, sites worked on have included Barnham Common, School Plain, so Fredericks Wood, the town centre as well as Main Street Woods. This has seen sites checked, litter picked, conservation activities carried out each one. The team are also proud to now be wearing their high vis vest below, which was supported for a grant. The group was also helped with Fethford in Bloom and an immense weed growth clearing of the public areas, including the Fethford bus interchange in the town centre. The group have also carried out and tackled overhanging vegetation at Castle Park. Despite the low numbers, it was amazing that what was achieved and cleared from the boundary edges and long pathway areas. They also built some habitat piles within the castle mound area and ramparts to reuse some of the tree branch and vegetation, which then in turn provided the home for the wildlife and insects that are found at the site. This also proved successful in piles becoming nesting habitats for hedgehogs as well as birds. Moving on to another great task, conservation group also carried out is the planting of yellow rattle plug plants. This was at two sites, including School Plain and St Barnabas, recommended by Plant Life and Ian Woodward. In total, two hundred plugs were planted at both sites with a total of four hundred yellow rattle plants being introduced to both areas. Vegetation is also cleared from the footpaths that run along the side, the outer area of Barnham Cross Common, at the top of the football pitch side. This area was cleared to enable continued access for public to walk along the outer path routes of the site. Litter picks were conducted during the work taken place, a few people were scared on the common and several varieties of butterfly were also observed during the meeting. The group have also been carrying out butterfly monitoring and transacts on the site, including Barnham Common as well as back in April, creating habitats to the area of Castle Mound. This proved successful as only a few weeks after a blackbird was found nesting in the habitat pile. The group have also been successful in application of a grant from a total organisation for the revamp of these existing features on our assets for three thousand five hundred pounds. This will now see a new preformed pond guard, solar oxygenating pump and heavy duty fixed safety guard, which will make the area safer and now so open this area of a smaller orchard memorial garden to visitors to the local cemetery. Up and coming works with the group, further installation nest boxes to sites, vegetation management at Ford Meadow footpaths, installation of new benches at Ford Meadow, revamp from the pond, community participation with open spaces. As the weather improves, we'll also be looking at following events to help promote the open spaces, increase public and officer presence, as well as engaging with the local community. This will be carried out through a series of events, working in partnership together again with Barnham Common guided walks. Looking at the areas around our town, including school trips and open space areas to meet the animals and to look at the flora and fauna to again promote our sites. In total, the hours volunteered over the month of April with the conservation volunteers, it was thirty four hours. With the local company came in and done a community litter pick, thirty six hours. Conservation group in May was forty two point seven five and Fethford in Bloom currently sits at fifteen point seven five. But again, we encourage those residents and anybody who has Fethford at heart to come along and join our community groups as we're always looking for new volunteers.
What have you actually been doing?
Yeah, I think wow is a good response. That's fantastic. Thank you very much indeed. One of your best ever probably and that's you set yourself our standard. I've got some little bits and pieces, I'll try and work them quickly. A lot of contact with Norfolk County Council, Norfolk Highway, trying to persuade them to the job they used to do or we need them to do. Isn't something specific about them clearing gutters along residential roads?
Yeah, so there's a lot of issues at the moment surrounding our partners at the moment in a sense of vegetation. Weed vegetation is a big one for Fethford at the moment. We are constantly battling with vegetation growing around the public areas. Gutters and road gullies are another issue that we're finding with our highways especially. So those are the kind of crucial ones that we need that extra support on ideally from our partners.
Right, I'll just, I'll do one other because I think lots of others want to join in. You talked about Sam Two and you've had some requests. I was at the meeting of the neighbour Washington Johns yesterday and they would be very keen to have, to get on the list. Is that something that you can take from me now?
Absolutely, yeah.
It's, it's the perimeter road, which, which does see a fair amount of speed. Thanks very much.
Question. Sorry.
You had your hand up.
You know what you said, I took that as a sign. I couldn't get my hands out of my pocket, sorry. Just a quick, we had a question at full council about Fredericks Wood event, forty seven trees have been taken out. Is there any plan on replacing?
So at the moment, they've been thinning out the woodland because it is established, it's quite immature woodlands. And the recommendation from our tree surveyors, when they look at their area is to kind of try and thin it out to allow those mature species of trees to actually grow. One of the biggest problems we've found inside the actual main part of the woodland itself is that it's been swamped and there's been too many trees trying to grow within the facility for the type of species that are surviving within that area. So the recommendation was to kind of thin it out and remove any that were sort of listed as dangerous or had any defects.
Okay, could we send it off to the person to answer the question please, Mr Hattie? And secondly, regarding fly tipping, it's often a vain to me why Breckland don't tell the council where they've had successful flighting prosecutions. Because no one knows, we just, no one ever knows. We've had one recently, first one was fined four or five hundred pounds of board. But that never creeps down for Breckland, it just seems to stay there. They tell the councils, don't they? But they don't seem to give it to the town council.
I think that's a good question and without notice for Breckland actually.
Yeah. Also a part of that, congratulations on your team.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, a few things. Brilliant report, so good to see everything going on. I'm particularly pleased about the tap, which I kept emailing you about. And I've now used it twice, so very pleased, nice.
Could I ask very quickly on that point, what's the quality of water like?
It's good, tasted fine. I mean, I didn't test it myself, but it was fine.
And it was hot.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
It's good. And it was not hot, warm or anything, it was nice. Right. So on the grazing, I've just been thinking about it since Glenn spoke and everything. Is it worth us coming up with a backup plan for us not getting grazes then? Do we need to come up with?
It's something we're trying to explore the different options of how we go forward and if, I don't know, we can't get livestock, which I'm still desperate to want to provide, I still want to get livestock on there. We are battling seriously hours into trying to combat the issues and working alongside trying to explore and getting grazes on board. But I said earlier with the updates, one of the things that we're currently looking at, and I've got a meeting tomorrow with a company, is to go and look at providing some off the hop occasional security patrols to try and deter some of the behaviour that's happening. It's not just the livestock worrying and the livestock that's being attacked, but we've also experienced a large number of fires on the Barnham Common site. Norfolk Fire and Rescue are getting absolutely exasperated with keeping attending to fires that are being set within the horse areas. We've had fly tips, fencing cut, it's a number of issues, but the main crucial one for us with the grazer side is dog attacks. And unfortunately, every grazer that's been contacted as soon as we ask about sheep, not a chance. So we're going to really try our best to try and explore, trying to enforce what we have on the rules and regs of the site. And that is that dogs should be kept on leads, there should be no barbecues, there should be no camping, there should be no activity happening other than people enjoying the open space area. So we're going to try and use the enforcement route, a bit like Breckland are with some of their open spaces to kind of force the issue unfortunately to our public. You know, that these areas aren't to be respected.
I wasn't quite surprised because we were very open about all the issues that we've had and the grazer didn't. Well, when we, when we met for the photograph and everything, he was just very like, yeah, I know, that's fine, it's not going to be a problem. So I was surprised to hear that they'd obviously changed that.
I think he's kind of tried to rely on some other support outside of his grazing.
Right, okay.
And that's kind of now where we're, we're sort of, you know, you're finding things difficult to try and achieve what he's promised. But he's adamant that he's going to continue to work with us, he's trying to explore. I know he was having conversations yesterday with a couple of other grazer contacts. And we were exploring the routes of trying to support him as best we can as a council. Enforcing, you know, those kind of, you know, areas, you know, being tackled. So it's about working together and trying to find that solution and combating the issues that we're unfortunately facing.
Okay, I'll just come in on that point before, because I think you've got a couple more on me. I'll just come in on grazing. I think, obviously I'm sympathetic to what they're experiencing at Barnham Common, but as I said, you know, they should have been eyes wide open to the issues. I'm a bit disappointed about Castle Park specifically because there have been no dog attacks on Castle Park because we haven't tried it last time. So I would encourage them to, you know, give it a go and see what happens. Barnham Common is a big site, there is a tendency for people to let their dogs off because they can get away with it, yes, it's a huge expanse. I would like to think people would be more aware and the public and others would challenge people more if the dogs were off at Castle Park. We've also agreed that for the duration of the sheep being on there, we would lock the, lock the gates to prevent access.
Yep.
So those two things combined, they should be giving it a go, I think, to do that. So I would really push them on that. I sort of half jokingly said to you about six months ago, you know, we're going to get to a point where we're going to have to buy our own sheep as a town council. Because I completely agree with the point that was made earlier. I can't remember what year we're up to in terms of contractors now, but we're talking tens of thousands of pounds. We cannot do that and allow it to go back to being overgrown and then just repeat the cycle. We've got to, you know, we've tackled the big stuff.
Yeah.
Then introduce grazing to complement it. So, you know, one way or two, but I know you're working on it, it's not a criticism at all. at all, but, you know, I would feel much more comfortable with them giving it a go and with experience the same in the Castle Park. But we've got to find a solution.
Yeah, definitely.
Chris? Regarding Barnham Common, I mean, I'm not a big fan of having a Barnham Common because what it is, but I've had regular complaints from residents being intimidated when they go down to the river area where for years and years and years it was the death of the swimming pool and kiddies and families would go down there. They've come back and said, we've had to come away, there's parties, there's barbecues, there's drinking, there's drug taking, there's ASB behaviour, there's rubbish left down by the river park. Don't know, this can't go on because we, you know, that's spent Barnham Common abroad and that little piece of river is a family meeting place and I would, you know, reticently support and find some ways of stopping it.
I think it's very unfortunate because Breckland District Council have put a notice up saying no overnight parking. There's, well, social media has been outraged at that, which I think, I'll sit here and say it, I think it's completely unwinding. There we go.
Well, I think that outrage has only been by about three people.
That's a very fair point.
Yeah. And the signs have worked, which is, which is the main, the main point, you know, you can't actually go in there and park your car up and walk around now, whereas before you couldn't get in because there were so many vans.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Can't let her finish, she had a couple more. Yeah, so just to finish that off, I understand we're basically trying to get the grazing, but I think we need a backup plan or something.
We do, otherwise it's another huge amount of money next year.
It's already, yeah.
You know, Glenn's observation is highlighted once again, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, there's just one other thing I was going to say about the play parks, really great to see that's being looked at. I was, someone reached out to me about a communication board, it's for like a non-speaking neurodivergent people to have a board up. I thought maybe I could send you the information for that so that can be added in the mix.
Interesting. Carla, did you have a point, Mike?
Quick points, yeah, like Terry said, we've been going at this with the grazers for a long time and wait before myself, I would imagine, no Terry. It's a constant problem, I mean, we do need to find something that works. It doesn't need to be great, it might be costly, but something that works on the long term because it seems that every year we have the same issue and we've been revolving grazers through the years as far as I'm concerned, as I can understand, and it all starts very well until the issues start and then it all sort of falls through and then it's going to cost us more and then we have issues trying to convince the grazers to come back again. So it's like an ongoing saga and if, I would be very keen on finding solutions and alternatives to all of this that would work for the grounds and for the locals, but something needs to be done for sure. Second, it's just a question to clarify, so the group, the conservation group at the grant of £3,500, £3,500.
Yeah.
Which is great, it doesn't really tell, is this a local organisation, is this like local authority or is it a private investors contributing?
So we're basically working alongside the BFAR project, they had an overspend, an underspend, sorry, project money and it was kind of pushed out that anybody could apply. And we kind of looked at some of the existing assets that we've got on some of our sites that potentially we could save money on by applying for a grant. So that's enabled us to do those kind of things, but again, not affecting our budget as such to deliver those, you know, areas of projects.
No, I think it's great. My question was where was the money coming from? Because if there's more available, by all means go after it. If you can get more, more, you know, things to improve the grounds and without, you know, taking away, shipping away from our budget, then we're all for it. Thank you.
Maglan, Terry.
Thank you very much. I just wondered if there was any feedback you've had at all from the police on the Sam Two because it did get mentioned, I have passed it on. I'll keep pushing that because, right, okay. You did mention Mill Lane as a potential source that came out of a planning meeting and we think that the data would be really useful in our defence for the town council because we're complaining about the way highways are sort of grading it as a minor back road. On the play, on the play equipment, I'm sure you're aware that there was a youth advisory board did a lot of work with play, play equipment, so I think a lot of that's already done.
Yeah.
It might be quite useful because this is how they've done it in the past, is they've just come along and, you know, given advice or given an opinion on it and it's always good to get that, you know, the younger element involved in it if we can.
Yeah, absolutely.
All the details of that. King Square, I was really disappointed to see the other day, there was graffiti and some of the plants had been pulled out not long after you'd just cleaned it all. I really feel for you on that. And finally, I've been cornered by a few people about our volunteer environment people, are they putting other people who are doing that similar kind of work out of joint or is that something we need to talk about elsewhere?
Yeah, yeah, happy to have discussions, yeah.
It was just that somebody said they've stopped somebody else doing it and now our team's taken over, I said, I'm sure it's not true.
We're kind of open to working with everybody and Hazel on our social media side is trying to push that anybody is welcome to come and join us. We're about kind of working alongside everybody existing out there that's currently doing great work within the town, but we all want to see a positive change for Fethford and I think, you know, all working together, we can deliver that. So there's no conflict of community there, we are open, diverse, anybody is welcome to come along to our weekly meets. So we're absolutely open to anybody coming along and joining us.
Terry?
Yeah, just wanted to add on to that because I actually had a conversation with David, the officer that's been doing a lot of the weed clearing, and before we started to encourage him to reach out to other groups just so that we don't step on people's toes and we actually compliment. Frankly, there's enough weeds for everybody. You know, I'd say that quite confidently, but I know that David actively looked into where they'd been cleaning on a Wednesday so that when the Friday session happened, it could follow on from that and have a bigger impact. I also encouraged him to say to them, you know, if they need any equipment or anything like that, we as a town council could buy that. So hopefully those conversations continue.
Yeah, when I got a call and it did feel like a really good piece of news that had just been spun badly and I, you know, I thought, yeah, I think so. All right, great, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Highlight of the month, so, you know, for me and I'm sure everybody else, a massive thank you for your hard work from you and the team, they really appreciate it.
Total points, firstly the sponsorship, I'm amazed how much money you've got in for sponsorship, so real well done on that, that's really good news. Are there baskets and tubs and whatnot still looking for sponsors?
We're still open to anybody who wants to sponsor. We just today have calculated who's obviously sponsored and who we've also contacted, so we'll do another re-contact and just give our people an opportunity again to come in if they've kind of missed it off their radar. But again, it's about working together for a positive change to Fethford.
Okay, I'm really pleased to hear you go back to this because sometimes it does take more than one ask, if some of these kids can drop off their list. And again, promoting it on social media, if other businesses or people see others sponsoring, it encourages them to get involved because it makes it more of a sort of group effort. And I'm really pleased to see the social media about the before and after pics. I mean, the before and after for the bus station was incredible, the more we do of that, the better, but make sure we emphasise all the time, this is not the town council finally catching up with stuff we haven't done, this was never our responsibility to do it, as you pointed out this evening, we are doing stuff that other people aren't doing because we want the town to look nice. So it's not our fault the weeds are there.
I think again, you know, just re-illiterating that, you know, aspect of community groups out there that are obviously working within our town, you know, there is plenty of weeds out there for everybody, you know, we are kind of working on sites that have been neglected and unfortunately have been left for a amount of time. So we're not, you know, currently going over existing assets and weeds that have been maintained previously by these local groups.
And the big benefit with what we're doing versus what say Norfolk are doing, Norfolk don't pull the weeds, they just spray them. Some of the weeds that we've got in town, they're six foot tall, you know, but they're spraying them, they look empty for weeks on end and then they block the drains and the gullies. By doing what we're doing, manually filling them, we're dealing with the problem and not, you know, adding to chemicals and the rest of it. That's good. The plant life and the ear wood would pluck, I wasn't aware of that, so I'm really pleased to say that not only are we just not cutting the grass, we're proactively adding to the species that are there, following his advice, I'm glad we've acted on that. And similarly with the cemetery pond, so precious to see that we might finally get that open. We lose so many ponds frankly, you know, the health and safety and all the rest of it, they really add to the fight, you know, if we're going to do anything to act above that, introducing ponds and more speech is what, absolutely crucial, I'm really pleased that, because there was talk years ago, town council just filling that in, you know, so that was a huge asset in the cemetery.
Thank you. We're all done, we have to note the report, that doesn't require a vote, does it? Autumn 59, the burial administrator's report, if you could whistle through that one.
Yeah, okay, so just a quick pass over on the burial administrator's reports, again to note the report. Interments in April carried out a total of four interments, two interments were in the cemetery extension and two were ashes interments. In May, we carried out a total of nine interments, two of these interments were in the older part of the cemetery, three were interments were in the cemetery extension and four were ashes interments. We've also had two ashes interments booked in for June and again, there's a spreadsheet showing all the interments so far within 2024.
Any questions? Now that we know that report, thank you Dick, and we move on to item 60, which is the allotment report.
Okay, so moving on to Community Environment and Settlements' allotment report. So allotments, action points received from the allotment committee held on the 11th of April 24. The allotment officer to erect signs on the outside of the gates on the Berry Road allotment site regarding the control of dogs and this task was completed. The allotment officer was also asked to locate five allotment, allocate five allotment plots that can be allocated on a solar scene basis, free of rented charges for one year, where the tenant clears the plots themselves, including disposable waste materials. This task was in progress and resulted in one of the five allotted allotment plots being allocated on Maglan Street allotment site. Further plots to be considered for offering under these conditions will be on the Mumford Road site and the group of plots in mind will require dividing into half sections before reallocating. Routine allotment inspections are starting from the 1st of April and every allotment plot is now received its first routine annual inspection of the year and this has resulted in 102 personalised letters being sent to relevant tenants. The key issues have been the following items, lack of cultivations, excessive hoarding of materials, lack of livestock welfare and the exceedance of the agreed number of kept livestock, especially chickens and birds, incorrect use of structures, broken glass. A tenant who has been issued an improvement letter will be given a period of eight weeks to rectify the underlying issues of concern, where livestock concerns are dealt with on the day of the inspection. Re-inspections will now be carried out after the 1st of June 24. Four tenants have decided to give notice to relinquish their plots after receiving their individual inspection reports and the main reason being that they no longer have available time to maintain their plots. Allocations and waiting lists, so since the last allotment committee meeting held on the 11th of April, 15 applicants have been contacted and this has resulted in eight applicants accepting their offers of allotment plots. The allotment waiting list now stands at 22 applicants, the number of vacant plots stands at 13. Mumford Road, eight full plots, Berry Road, two full plots and one half plot, London Road, one full plot, Itneal Way, one full plot. All vacant full plots will be hard if practical. Contractual work, so the first grass cut of the season was carried out in May. Pest control has been carried out on the London Road and Berry Road allotment sites with further monitoring proceeds put in place. These areas were sort of having a few issues with pest control, but this is now being dealt with. The office officer's recommendation is that the committee is requested to discuss and note the report.
What I've done is I've made some amendments and Nick's not aware of it, so we've just added, this covered everything, but there's just two things to be added, there's the date of the allotment hold, there's the Asian committee meetings, so we've just suggested some dates there, we don't have to prove them necessarily at this meeting, but if the committee would just like to consider that. And then this is some feedback, we had elections of site representatives and all the sites, we've got representatives except for one site, there were three people out of nine of what, I think it's nine of what, they stood for election and we allowed, there was an election and one person got four and the rest got two, so I just thought I'd get the committee vote before I get the candidates and what has happened there.
Thank you very much. Comments?
I was looking to you, Chris, I expected. Regarding the liaison, that's okay, when are we having the next informal one? We've got it planned.
It is, it is. November 2024, if you, November 20 July.
Oh, I see, so the liaison committee acts as an informant as opposed to how it was.
And they would have site representative meetings, that's different.
I had to, I just want to be clear.
Back to the 11th.
Yeah. Okay.
And the other thing that I thought you might ask, but you haven't, so I'll answer anyway, was we'll bring the two, whatever you call them.
Answering job.
Yeah, we'll bring them along when there's a decision to be made. Today's just note report. So I don't think with the best word in the world is a lot of point than sitting through this when there's no decision to be made. Okay, Carla.
I noticed there's eight weeks of notice if the plots are not in condition before they are to give away the plots back to the council. I'm wondering if that's a whole lot of time. I'm not saying that if this is not cultivated, that may not be enough time, somebody may have a health issue and it can skip a season, I can understand that, but situations like there's glass or over materials and a clearing of the plot should be something that is part of requirements to keep the plots, considering we always have a waiting list of people. I wonder if eight weeks, not too much of a leeway for people to put the plot up to standard, if you consider a plot is planted by seasons, give them eight weeks and the whole season, the whole season is gone and somebody else could have used it. I would maybe suggest that this time gets reviewed to maybe shorten it up a little bit. If it's a matter of materials or something that's not quite light, just, you know, get them four weeks, six weeks maybe, I think quite a long time, considering there's a lot of people wanting plots, they can't get them, it's just a suggestion.
On the spot, I tend to agree with you actually.
It's just, and it depends how you look at it, I can see that some people may have an issue not being able to plant the season and I can understand that it's an intimidating circumstances that they can explain or put forward. Okay. If it's something like, you know, rubbish or glass or things like that, they should be able to clear it. If they're not fit enough to clear their plots, then you assume they're not fit enough to keep them and plant them and keep them up to standard. So, you know, there's always somebody else on the waiting list that's keen to do it, it's just an opinion.
Chris really doesn't like it when I do this, but I talk about when I had a plot in Berry, at Berry it was four weeks.
That's harsh. Mind me fair.
It's a shame.
Yeah, of course.
It may or may not afford this as a good, as a suggestion, Danny.
I think on some issues, for example, if there's cruelty to poultry, there's no time. So we intervene, the people don't look after the poultry. But what we have found is we, for example, have issues now where people, if they write us, I mean, we've had people that are in hospital, people that have been out, people that can't cope. And what we've got to do is we've also got to be very careful because we can set a four week timeframe, but there are so many inspections to actually do that we've got to have the capacity, there's only one person doing the inspection. So what we used to do is we used to have very short periods of time, never be able to do it and then everything that we do loses focus, whereas now we can do it within the eight weeks. So we actually get there and enforce it. Over time, I think we can reduce it, but if, you know, nothing worse is saying, you have two weeks or three weeks to do something and then three months later you hop on and say you haven't done it, that's really.
That makes a lot of sense, so it's not about time for people to get it straight, it's about the time we have to sort it out.
It's not about the attendance, it's about not being sure it's done and not be able to enforce it, that's about all right. If we need eight weeks to check it over, then eight weeks it is, but I think it's a lot of time. If we need eight weeks to check it over, then eight weeks it is, but it's sort of fine. Uh, but I think it's a lot of time.
But one of the things we've had as a problem is the fact that certain allotments aren't sticking with the, at least three seventy-five percent growing space.
Yeah.
And we know one or two, don't we, which we actually let her get, get away with. I mean, this is something we really need to look into, uh, because we've said we're going to sort it, we're going to sort it, but we never have. You know, it's got, it's got.
Are they full plots or half plots?
Full plot.
Well, they need to, you know what I'm going to say, don't you? They, they probably need to be half, don't they?
Again, I think what we've done is one of the sites, particularly in London Road, where we've had our major, major problems. We've actually gone and done a full inspection there. And then we, we decided at the last allotment committee meeting to do another formal inspection, because what we think we've got there is abandoned plots. So in other words, someone said, okay, we're not, you know, you can have our plots on our behalf, no technical work, no control, et cetera. And that should be disowned. But the problems at, at London Road in particular, I mean, someone, they call it the castle, you know, the South of Palace, you know, and the persons. Uh, we just inspected their potty tunnel.
Yeah.
It would take two or three skips. If they walked out to, you know, to borrow it, we as a council would probably spend a thousand pounds carrying their, carrying their plot. So we're working with them, again, we need a lot of time working with them, say, look, you need to make a contribution, we will help. But if you've got to make a contribution, otherwise we're going to come after you, which we came to in terms of our agreement, we're going to come after you with legal costs. To recover that. So, so it is being sorted out and, and we've got to sort through our inspection of London Road. But it's, it, we've made progress. I mean, I'm actually delighted with the amount of progress we made. I get a copy of every single one of these letters, uh, and I get the response to some, all the, all the letters. I'm very much aware of, of what, what, what some of those issues are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, report, no, cheers, thank you. Um, okay, report. Here we go.
Okay, so the oversight of the market has been transferred to this committee and there's consequently been a change of line management. Um, activity reports will now be prepared in future reports. Um, a Fettford Town Council Market Trader Pack is currently being finalised and this will soon be ready for distribution to exist in the new market traders. Uh, more comprehensive report will be tabled at future committee meetings.
I'll just add to that. I've had, um, I've had sight of that, um, pack and haven't done anything about it yet. That's totally on me. Um, because I think there are some other changes, is that fair? Do you want to speak about that?
I, I think just, uh, and I've just got to confirm today is our market coordinator has resigned, uh, the first of June. Uh, so we'll be leaving us at the end of June. So that also has an impact in terms of what we're trying to do with the market. Um, but we will come up with an actual plan, uh, to fill that, that particular position.
Thank you. Mike.
Thank you. Um, uh, this is an area for continuing development.
Yes.
Been a frustration for a number of years. We, we've made progress, you know, two steps forward and one less recorded back, so we understand that. It really is tricky. And yet at the same time, uh, we had the continental market, uh, just a short time ago. This twenty-four stores, something like that, absolutely marvelous display of stores. So there are traders out there doing something, whether they're the same traders, it's, I don't know, I just, just have, so far that's just reflection. Um, did, did anyone approach those twenty-four and say, you know, we, we've got markets on Tuesdays and Saturdays. Have you considered, would you like to come? You don't have to make a long-term commitment, but.
So one of the particular issues that have surrounded continental, continental market is they all move around together. So they don't break away from that specific market.
Yep.
Um, so they do travel around the country, um, to different towns, um, offering their trade of goods. Um, but we are continuing to work with some, um, alternative contacts to try and drum up some more different trades and, and market stores onto our market to drive that. Uh, I think it's important as part of our heritage to retain our market. And I think, you know, going forward, we will try our best to track more storeholders.
I'll give you a bit of an answer to that as well, Mike. Um, in my previous role as chair of, uh, venues market comms. I did ask the officer there if we could have a couple of stores on the main market. Um, he told me that was impossible. Just leave that there. Um, another comment I would wish to raise is that we had the continental market on the, um. Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. On the Sunday, I was really pleased to see that we had four stores on the market. Involving children, which is brilliant.
Yes.
Um, and then we come to the Tuesday, which is the bank holiday. Bearing in mind, uh, Tuesday offering on the market is really quite a port and there's nothing there. I think that would be an ideal time and space. Uh, market traders tell me that bank holidays and summer holidays, um, kids' holidays, school holidays are always their worst times. So I would have thought that would have been an ideal time to have some sort of offer that Tuesday. And what I would ask for, and this may not be the appropriate, um, committee to do that. But I would ask for something similar in terms of a children's event, uh, on Tuesdays over the summer holidays. It, it seems daft not to do something.
Carla. Suggest, there's, um, there's a new business that opened by Riverside, which is activities for children and all sorts of things. I haven't been around because I've been away on a business trip, as you guys know, so I haven't visited, but I intend to go there and say hi. Um, it might be worth to involve people who's already doing activities locally, particularly possibly in the centre of town. And maybe create something about with themselves and maybe a couple of other groups that have activities oriented for children. They might want to chip in and come together as a whole to put something on in town. And maybe cost effective, maybe kind of provide a bit of a diverse set of options.
A bit of joined up thinking, I think, I think that would be really helpful.
Suggestion is, it's hard to ask.
Um, decision, thank you. Sixty-two small grants, um, to consider two, I believe, small grant applications that have previously been circulated to councillors. Um, to approve the two, um. Two applications, one for Liberty, um, Food Bank and one for, not sure, uh, Resilience Association.
That's the thing, yeah, I, I haven't, sorry, I've not got any of these papers at all. I don't know why, perhaps because I'm not on this committee, but I've never, I haven't got anything. But when you're showing up there, I haven't got, so I didn't know anything about this, et cetera, et cetera.
Pack should go out.
Didn't come to me, that's all I got to hear, so.
I, I think what might have happened, it was such a big pack that it was sent as, it's about thirteen megabyte. And I know when I have sent you big packs before, it's actually taken quite a while for, for, for it to come through. So what is, uh, your one, uh, uh, there's some other council ones, the parameters set on the, on the emails. This is, we sent it out on Adobe, as well as Word. Adobe came out at about thirteen megabyte, if I remember correctly, and Word is about thirty to forty megabyte. So I am aware that was a risk that we took in terms of doing that. And hopefully when we meet the SharePoint, which is not too far down the road, we won't have that particular problem. But you should be able to actually access the file through, through a link rather than through that.
Thanks, Chris, Carla.
Good question. I thought, not long ago, we sorted out all the IT tech issues and we had a company to upgrade the whole system to make it super fast, in all light speed, basically. We were about to put a click and the thing would be gone before we even clicked the button. Now, you guys are telling me to take forever to upload a file. I'm confused.
Some people's emails have got size restrictions on it and I, that's the risk we have.
Chris needs to update Charles Borrow computer, that's.
That could be it, or.
Chris's computer works by steam, you don't.
Unfortunately, but, but the files are so big, that on some people's emails, it, it, I can remember sending something, sending something out in finance. And Chris didn't receive it and there was another councillor that didn't receive their files.
I cannot think of that, but I assumed that all our emails, especially councillors, were at the same, you know, restrictions or. Sessions in it, like same framework of how much you can upload. Why is it working differently in different emails then?
I, I'm not sure, I'm an accountant, so I, I use it.
You know, fair point.
My spelling with you, Chris, is a legacy issue because you've been about here pretty much. As long as anybody else.
I mean, I must have, this is the first time that I've never ever received a presentation back.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, only since, since I've become mayor, I've never ever, it's just now it's started.
Well, stop, stop being arrogant.
That seems fair to me, I'm not.
Sorry. Uh, no, I don't want to, uh, embarrass anyone, but, and I've just got the email up, Chris, and your email isn't in, in the list.
Is it not, then?
No, and I suspect it's because, have you, have distribution units been set up for the different committees?
No.
Okay.
And that may.
Because Chris isn't a member of this committee as, as one of the nine, but he's because he's mayor, so that's why you missed out.
Sorry.
I bet. Maybe something there, so.
Don't try that, Ryan.
I'll take it all back.
With apologies.
Do you want me to forward it to you, Chris, just to agree it all?
No, I've been reading Mike. I'm sorry, you're not, no, but next time.
Yeah, do I or not?
But next time I would like.
I was trying to help, Chris. Save yourself.
Even though it wasn't your fault.
No, no, um, thanks. If I could sort of drag us back to the issue at hand, which are small grants, grants for the, um, Food Bank and the Resilience Association.
Yep.
Um. Anything to add?
Uh, if, yeah, the grants, uh, the Food Bank one, they're registered charity. So all their compliance stuff goes, goes through that. They've complied with the, with the conditions of the grant. Whether this committee supports what they're trying to do, which is really to extend their operations and get some blood boxes in. And the Norwich Road, this, uh, uh, residents estate, their grant is only for three hundred pounds. So it's just to make that, that, they've also complied fully with all the, uh, uh, conditions of the small grant policy. And again, it's whether the committee, uh, supports what they're trying to do with the grant.
Any comments first? That looks like a big no. Could I have a proposer please? Thank you, Carla, and a second, I. Um, votes in favour, again, well, that's your one, we're setting that. Uh, that, that's carried. Thank, uh, thank you very much.
Noting Max's extension.
Yeah. Does it count as an extension or do you?
Well, I just thought it would be unfair to vote on.
No.
And not the other part.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
Best to stay out, I think, on that one.
As, as it's, as there was no debate about it.
No.
Good, happy, thank you. Um. Item sixty-three, support of the climate and nature bill. I would chuck that one over to you, Hazel, if that's.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I've got an older agenda, so I can please myself. Um, so the purpose of this, I'm not going to read through everything because there's loads of words. But the purpose of this is for us to decide if we would like for us as a town council to support the climate and nature bill. And so basically it is a bill that's been put to parliament. Um, I'll just read through the, uh, what, what's included in the bill so we know what we're supporting. And so number one, delivering a joined up environmental plan as the crises in climate and nature are deeply entrenched. Requiring a plan that considers both together. Reducing emissions in line with one point five degrees Celsius to ensure emissions are reduced rapidly for the best chance of limiting warming to one point five degrees Celsius. Not halting but also reversing the decline in nature, setting nature measurably on the path to recovery by twenty thirty. Taking responsibility for our overseas footprint, both emissions and ecological. Prioritising nature in decision-making and ending fossil fuel production and imports as rapidly as possible. Ensuring that no one is left behind by providing for retraining for people currently working in fossil fuel industries. And giving people a say and finding a fair way forward through an independent and temporary climate and nature assembly. Representative of the UK population, an essential tool for bringing public opinion along with the unprecedented pace of change required. So this is a bill to be taken to national government and basically our role in it would just be to say that we support this as something that we would like to see happen. I think it fits well, having declared a climate emergency, that we're taking actions to show that we are, um, supporting that. And all that's required from us would be to say that we support the bill. Um, to inform local residents and press of this decision, to write to our local MP to inform them that the motion has been passed, urging them to sign up or say thank you. And I checked this morning and our Labour candidate and Green candidate have both signed up as supporters, but none of the other candidates have. So we would have to do that obviously after the general election. Um, and to write to zero Iowa organisers, um, to express our support, so. Not even too time consuming, but hopefully something, we would appear on the website as supporters for the, for the bill.
Thank you very much. Comments? Mike. I, I think there's a really good opportunity here because we've been, well, Nick's been telling us all the great things that we're doing. Uh, for the ecology and everything else. I think it would be great to highlight that and say, and it would be not very prudent. Not to sign up to something that mirrors everything we're doing as a town council. Because that not only makes sure that we sign up to it, but also highlights the work we're doing at our level. I mean, we can't change whether people use fossil fuels across the country, but we can have. And it's important getting that message across that we're doing what we can in our space. So I, I think it's a, it would be a good opportunity to advertise the great work that we're doing.
Thank you. Um, Mike. Yeah, thanks for your work on this. I, I just want to draw attention fairly obviously to an item, um, which I'll just read out the line. Climate change remains a major concern for voters, with sixty-six percent of people, according to YouGov, expressing that they're worried about climate change and its effects. I think that's, uh, um, in effect gives us the right to, to say that it's democratic to support that. So I think we can use the word democratic. Two thirds of people in the country are saying, uh, we need to be doing things about this. Um, and if there are any, um, climate change skeptics or conspiracy theorists in the town, I hope they'll hear that two thirds majority.
I think that's very important, isn't it? Are there any? I've, I've never met him.
No, that's, please, please do you.
So. Any further comments? Could I have then a proposer this, um, for this motion?
Should I be proposing it to the person that was. Is that allowed?
Have a second, I please. Those in favour? Um, so everyone, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Similarly, now move on to item sixty-four, the biodiversity policy and action plan. And again, I'll give this over to you, Hazel.
Great, thank you. And this goes very nicely with what Mac was just saying about us talking about all the brilliant stuff that we're doing. Um, so legally, as a town council, we are required to show that we are protecting and enhancing biodiversity at a local level. Um, so the purpose of this is that we actually have a policy in place, um, that aligns with, um. I use the NALC template basically and tweaks it to fit with what we're doing here. Um, so it's basically meeting a legal requirement, but actually it's also a really good opportunity for us to say all the amazing stuff that we're doing. For us also to get some guidance on good things, other things that we can do. Um, and yeah, it's another really long one that I'm not going to read everything out. But one of the, the top things on here that I wanted to specifically mention was having a section on the website. So that we can have a space for us to have those management plans that we have for us to have the policy and action plan. And also, um, around sessions that we've had about education. So, uh, Betford's a really amazing place for plants in particular, so having information where people can find out about plants and different things. So having that area on the website and to do that, yeah, there's, there's loads of stuff in here and I feel like there's loads of stuff that we're doing. But if we actually have it on paper, it helps us to focus and also talk about what we're doing.
Thank you. Comments?
Sorry. I'm, I'm particularly pleased to see this one because I think actually, um, for us as a Fettford town council. The biodiversity aspect is something that we can have a particular impact on, um, for two reasons mainly. Um, we are the largest town council in Norfolk and we own a lot of buildings and a lot of land. So this is about practical steps. Our ability to influence, uh, climate is, uh, limited in some sense. Our ability to implement, um, the biodiversity in the town is actually quite significant. Um, and the other reason it's particularly important for us is because we are actually in an environmentally significant area. We have a river running through the town, we've already heard about, um, chalky land and the sort of variety of land that we own. Um, and it's absolutely right that we manage that in a way that promotes conservation and biodiversity. And so really pleased that we're going down this route and we've heard about, um, uh, the, uh, bird boxes and, and things like that, which are already having an impact. I'm really keen and I couldn't see too much mention in there about. I'm really keen, and I couldn't see too much mention in there about establishing some baseline figures. I know we've done some monitoring of flora and fauna already, and I know there's been sort of butterfly surveys and that sort of thing. I'd be quite keen for us to do more work establishing what's out there now so that in five years' time, 10 years' time, we can actually see if this biodiversity policy has worked. Thank you.
I think it's always good to reinforce and to make people aware that sometimes they divide two things. They divide what's climate change and the actions that need to be taken in the grand scheme of things from what it is to deal with biodiversity and local conservation, deal with the grounds, which, like Terry said, we have a massive amount of green spaces and areas that we care for. And we do a whole lot for the environment when those areas. I think people need to start bringing closer to home, to them, to the local level, into a smaller scale, that climate change and the protection of the environment doesn't need to be a grand thing. It's about the small steps locally in our communities. And I think people tend to divide that, and that's why a lot of confusion, a lot of confrontation starts with some groups that might not be in favour of the climate bill and whatnot. And that's just the point, Hazel's point, that it is important. But I think people need to see it at local level and understand how we fit in in the grand scheme of things. And I mean, we are doing a lot of steps. We've done a lot of steps for a lot of years, taking care of what is butterflies or the grass or whatever. I mean, all the baby steps, like just making the bus stations a bit more greener, to be more environmentally friendly for insects and birds and whatnot. Those are all little baby steps, and some people don't tend to fit them in into that framework. It's about people understanding it all fitting in one large framework and all fits into the same thing, which is the climate change. And now we can bring them, prevent the impacts of it. So I think having the website, having clear about that, this is the baby step. So this is the little local things we are doing as part of our contribution and our stance in the grand scheme of things. So make that clear to the public, which sometimes can be quite confusing. I know that from speaking to different people, they seem to model the waters and suggestions.
Okay, thank you. There's an old green saying, isn't there? They say, think locally, act globally, and that's what we're doing, isn't it? That's exactly what we're doing, and I love the idea that we will be, by publicising it, by putting it on our website, we'll be holding ourselves to account. I think that's really helpful. Any further comments?
We had a trip around the cemetery in Easter, looking at the plants that were available there. And that's really handy because actually this is broken down into chunks and the cemetery is part of that. So we can highlight those in those little chunks, and I think that's really helpful. It would support everything that's in these.
Right, can I have a? I have a, oh, Hazel. Can I have a second up please? Matt, thank you. Votes in favour? And votes against and abstentions, that's unanimous again. Thank you. And a quick no. I think Alan was delighted that both those items, did you have to do any work on that because they were so well presented? Item sixty-five, unlocking Thetford's potential fund. I'll chuck this at you, Alan, if you can.
What? We issued a press release or the council issued a press release. And I think what it did was set out what it becomes in this committee for ratification. So that's one of the reasons why this item is here. The allocations are set out in the pack, so Abbey Action Group got £2,500, Tredwell Munson £5,000, Broke Kids £5,000, Thetford Cricket Club £5,000, and Thetford Scouts £2,500, Thetford Beach £2,150, and Thetford Music Project £1,150. So the first decision required by the committee is to include that allocation. The second thing that we certainly do in the press release was to review the process and to identify changes, improvements. Should such a process be undertaken in future? And having a discussion with the chair, we might just get a little working group. If we had to do this again, get a working group to actually sit down and go through that rather than trying to go through a chair. I think there were a lot of lessons learned. I think, you know, from an officer's perspective, I think, you know, it worked exceptionally well. But like everything else, you're always looking at something and it can be improved. And we asked for comments from the public and participants. Unfortunately, we haven't had any, so that would be quite useful feedback to that working group. But at least we've gone through the process of asking them that. So really, I think the key decision is to ratify the allocation of funding as set out in the paper.
Thank you. I would say that post the event, and I'll probably look at social media more than I should. I haven't seen a single negative comment. I think under any terms you consider, it was a success. So thank you, Alan, for your hard work. Thank you, Terry, for the idea. Well done, everyone. We need to ratify the results, do we? Oh, sorry, I'm called.
Quick unremark. I don't know if it's a conflict of interest or not, but I am the councillor appointed to test the music project. So I wonder whether or not I need to declare any sort of conflict when it comes to deciding this, because they're one of the frontiers.
Yeah.
Just wondering. I mean, I'm just doing a notice where now I remember I'm on the board as a councillor, so.
On the chair of the Abbey Action Group, so.
Well, then in that case I should be fine. Just making sure it was all right.
And how did we ask for feedback?
It was through the press release. And we contacted participants. So the press release was the key thing of actually doing this. So we scheduled the participants individually. We did have the press release and we asked for members of the public and participants to do it. And we also made, we emailed the participants we asked for some feedback.
Another participant's got back with feedback on.
No. We've probably focused on those that won rather than that. So that might be the.
All right. And just two points. I think the main thing we need to consider, if it's repeated, is around the voting. I mean, it may not be considered because it's not something that we budgeted for. We were only able to do this because of the underspend in the last financial year, so it was a bit of a windfall in that sense. You know, it's a gift of the council to decide the budget for it next year if it wants to repeat it. The criticism we had was about no voting in advance. And the key reason why people weren't able to vote in advance was because fifteen groups were coming along to take presentations, to have a pitch and to deliver presentations and to meet and greet people that were voting. And it'd been unfair if people could vote without bothering to turn up to look at those presentations because people put time and effort into it. What happened in several cases where people turned up, got their ballot paper and voted, and then left without looking at the presentations. So we can either in the future, if it were to be repeated, consider advanced voting. That would increase the benefits, so that is you would increase the number of people voting. But would you get, it becomes essentially a popularity contest of who's got the best members and that sort of thing. Or you could restrict it even further to say you could give your ballot papers at the end of the presentation. You know, so you sign up at the start, you watch presentations, and then you're handed your ballot paper. Then the downside of that is you have less people participating. I mean, we had 209 votes, which I think is incredible. I never anticipate that many votes. If we reduce the number of, as we reduce accessibility and have fewer votes, you won't get 209, would be my view. Then again, having set the standard now, maybe people will really buy into it next year. I was amazed how many groups applied, how many people turned up on the night, how many people voted. So there's swings and roundabouts to consider for whatever option we go down. And, you know, advantages, disadvantages, and that's just something to bear in mind. I'm particularly pleased that so many groups applied, seven of the, I think it was thirteen in the end. There's one pulled out in advance and one pulled out on the night. I think it was thirteen groups applied. So I'm going to make a suggestion for number one on your bullet point there around the allocation of funding, which is that for the groups that were unsuccessful, we award them £250 from the small grants pot as a gesture of goodwill to thank them for the effort they put in so that they don't leave empty-handed. The odds are they probably won't be applying for a small grant anywhere because we've helped seven groups in Thetford with a fairly large grant. So I think we'll get through the year with a small grant spot. And we can always borrow funds from other departments if we need to. But six groups, £250, it's a relatively small amount of money. And I think it's a sort of, as I say, a gesture of goodwill.
Two points coming back on that. Number one, if we have to, if we did voting at the end, it might need to be earlier because the scouts needed to be there. What was the other thing? Just thrown out my head. Oh, yeah. So if we were offering £250, would it be worth saying that they could apply for the full £500 if it gives them the option to apply?
I don't have a chunk in £50.
Yeah.
Yeah. Either they can just have the £250 or make a full application.
That seems a reasonable suggestion. Mike?
Thank you. We're beginning just to talk a wee bit about what would happen if we did it again. And we are committed to do it again. In fact, we should, not necessarily in this meeting, but perhaps in an early meeting, can I put it that way? Decide whether or not this is appropriate to recommend to the council. I think that it was successful. I think we can learn from it and the way it's been described. I hope we will do it again personally, but I don't think I want to be waiting till urgent panic time when we get really quite obsessed with money. Not, you know, this is a detailed thing and it's working out and see whether we can improve on the system and whether we commit to it and whether it's the same amount of money and so on and so forth, whether people can apply again. If not, why not? I would have thought it was worth adding, if you like, decisions required by this committee to review the process and to identify changes and improvements. Yes, yes. Should such a process be undertaken in future? Put cart before the horse, you know, let's agree in some way that we are going to repeat it in future. Or at least that we're going to recommend it to the council or that we recommend it for consideration. And then we're spending time getting the best way of doing it possible. So I don't think it's too soon to be thinking, perhaps in the next meeting, are we going to recommend to council that we go again?
Okay. I think that depends if we've got the funds.
Well, it does. I agree, but without a recommendation, it's a little bit legitimate for those members of the council not to to say, well, you haven't mentioned it so far, so we're written that out of our minds. It's got to compete for the money. I accept that.
Yeah.
I wonder if maybe off the back of what Mike said, it could be more that we need to come up with a process and now's the time to review the process. Now it's fresh in our minds and we have that laid out, ready to go, and we do want to do it again.
Yeah. Matt?
That was my point. Thank you.
Yeah. That being the case, would we want to, would we want to have a working group? Would we, or would we want to put it on the agenda for next meeting? Any thoughts on that? I think it's important you had a committee buy-in, so next meeting would make sense. Right, you know, it's a big decision, so nine people plus Chris making a decision is quite important. Anybody have any difficulty from that?
Sounds like a fair point. Think about it.
So that brings me, are there any more comments first of all? In which case we'll ratify the results of the public vote. Could I have a proposer for that, please? Very. And a second up? Thank you very much. All those in favour? Against?
I'll just check for Alan and we'll be doing the minutes and he will want to clarify. So the list of recipients are stated there, plus £250 for the groups that were unsuccessful.
Thank you.
So resolve from the.
Thanks very much. Item sixty-six, health and safety matters. Does Leeds councillor Chris Harvey here? Sorry? Okay. Anything from? Okay. Note the update that's noted. Correspondence? Any correspondence?
There are two letters. One is this letter from the Norwich Road Residents' Association. I haven't pronounced it. Norwich Road State Residents' Association. It really was just a letter to say to the council, while we're waiting for the covenant to be sorted out, that could there be some more consultation? And I think to engage with the contract of basis to see whether all the needs could be accommodated, whether there could be a community altered allotment, play area, a community based area, some of those to be considered. So I just brought it to the attention of the committee. We can't make, obviously make a decision, but I just thought it would be beneficial to the committee to see the actual letter.
Thank you.
And there's a second letter, which is about the cemetery. We changed the hours of watch during the pilot study. We had one or two very minor issues, which we don't know whether it happened after hours or whether it happened during the extended opening hours. And someone's just written and said that they're very concerned that we have the cemetery open. And it's really just bringing it to the committee's attention. We monitored this the whole time. I would like to say that that we happens because I touch wood, but, you know, nothing has happened in the pilot study and there's nothing that indicates that things may happen. We have to review it the whole time. And as we change our phase out our contractor and we get involved more and more, I think we'll have a better understanding of what happens in the cemetery. We'll be able to keep a better eye on it.
Have there been any incidents of?
That's good, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Correspondents noted.
We mentioned at the other meeting that I could mention outgoing correspondence.
It is on the agenda, sorry. I hope it's on the agenda.
I remembered this one, so it's fine.
Procedure to be set. This is sent to you for.
So I'd just like to suggest we send a letter using our litter picking templates, which we came up with probably a year ago now, to Tesco's. It came up at the Cloverfield Residents' Association. They do a good job litter picking the area, as many residents associations do. And there's a real issue around Tesco's, obviously, because of people littering. But particularly where people use the petrol station and use the gloves and then just chuck them and they're just like everywhere in the area, all around the bottom of Tesco's, and it's horrible. So if we could send them a letter requesting them to clear up, that'd be nice.
I think it could be the item of the fight and the time we, the. Kind of would send it out, so we can use that resolution that we passed about a year ago.
It's interesting, exactly the same problem that happened on the Norwich Road with the Marks and Spencer garage. And I went there the other day and they had somebody up right up the street clearing up. And those little see-through gloves are like, you know, like jellyfish are everywhere. You know, so they had taken notice in what we are, so hopefully Tesco's do the same.
Yeah, good.
I don't think it's an unreasonable request, is it?
No.
At all. Thank you. Thanks, Hazel. Item sixty-eight, action points from previous meetings. Can we go through these and then find a little more? A letter to be written to Environment Agency to reduce frequency of ground monitoring. I see that's gone.
It's still going, unfortunately.
Yeah. Okay. The renewal of the council's fleet options.
Still in progress.
Still in progress.
Yeah.
Review of the cemetery rules.
Yeah, so that's something that we've got to look at to be completed by the 30th of June.
Thank you. Locations of redundant signage requiring collection.
This is one of those things where you should just hold fire sometimes because I'd also asked Highways to pick them up. And when I went around on my bike to locate them, the truck was there picking them all up. They, you know, sort of waited, they'd gone.
So we could say that's done. That's done, thank you. Fantastic. Letter to Norfolk Highways.
That's in progress.
That's in progress, yes. Okay.
So I don't know whether we missed one there on the correct naming of Fredericks Wood, if we go back one.
Oh, yes.
Some other person that.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty, forty-four.
You're right, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there was quite a, is it Sir Frederick or Frederick, isn't it?
Yeah. Which one?
Did we get anywhere with that?
So it's still work in progress, but one of the scenarios that we've come across is that the land was owned by Fisher's estate. That was Sir Frederick Fisher. So it could be related.
That's the true story, that's the one.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at.
So it's not, it's not, it's not pretty. He's Freddie. It's
It's to do with the Fisher family.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At Colston Hall.
Yeah.
Yeah, that they used to own all that surrounding land.
That does, that does make a degree of sense, doesn't it?
They used to be part of the Colston States.
We've also got one here, the town team manager publicises the success of the clearing work they've done, so should we? I think we've done. Yeah, yeah, good.
Take all three of those, yeah?
Yeah. Seven five two twenty three, graffiti wipes. Councillor Donald.
This is another brilliant one of mine. I've run out in the box and then when I went back to the box, it was like the magic box that kept giving and there was more. It ran out this weekend when we cleaned the last street wipe, so now I definitely need them.
We've got good stock in, so you're absolutely fine.
I think we could say that one's done. Sam's data to be passed on to staff slash, whatever you call them now.
We've been getting that and we passed it on to the police and I mentioned it again at the Safe Neighborhoods group. They seem interested, but I'm not quite sure what value they're going to get. I think it would be more valuable to the town, particularly things like Mike is talking about with the community speed watch. Because it supports their ambition to get specific sites up. So, you know, we'll keep doing it, but I think there's definitely with the community speed watch, we will advertise that to them.
Good. Quotes regarding the Thomas Paine claim.
Yeah, so we've just got pretty much all the quotes in for the works and so that's something we can explore now going forward with budgets to get those works carried out.
Good. A list of selected pieces of equipment to be discussed at the next amenities committee meeting.
We also do that, because we're getting more stock, we're getting more equipment and we just need to, we also have to think about the end of thirty first of January, two twenty five, because we both had, we had a new contract, so we're just looking at at that and we buy months and ends that will help us going forward.
And the mayor to sign a pledge. Sorry, what for? To investigate further options of this.
I'm completely wrong, seven thirty five is to do with the pay pocket, pay equipment.
Oh, sorry, I beg your pardon, that's kind of my fault.
Yeah, and that's why the three things there, sorry, I could, it's my mistake. I think you have signed it, I've seen a signed copy of that pledge.
I've already done it. Thank you, Chris.
The only thing we haven't done is
Thank you for your hard work on this issue. And you have invited Thetford Youth Advisor Board.
We haven't done that.
Councillor Terry Germy, this is eight oh seven, councillor Terry Germy to provide a list of street furniture that requires repainting.
Yeah, I haven't done that yet. I know how busy they've been, so I'm like.
Nothing to do with how busy you've been.
Yeah, that's true.
Eight oh seven, committee planting sessions to be added to the record of volunteers, as I think we've done this, it's done.
Yeah.
Eight oh nine, acting town clerk to request any missing information relating to the unlocking Thetford's potential fund, we've done on that, haven't we? Eight one one, acting town clerk to liaise with Thetford Projects and partnership manager from Breckland District Council with further updates to be tabled at a future amenities committee.
All right, we'll be seeing the seventh, which I'll follow that up.
Okay. Eight one two, signs for uptake of the Thetford Cemetery, no response.
Yeah, so that's still in progress, I've liaised with the cemetery administrator and she's shown me that's in progress and will underway.
Beautiful, thank you. Eight one two, publicise members of the public when and how the cemetery water supplies will be provided, I think we've done that one, haven't we? Obviously something on Facebook about that. Eight one three, acting town clerk to include this item on future agendas for the amenities committee meetings.
I think we did that document last month when the council, the Cambridge has tabled, it's a continuation of that.
Eight one seven, press release to be generated regarding the right to play pledge. Yeah, that's done. And eight one seven, leader release to be generated for local council's improvement for town, that's been done, isn't it? Yeah, that's continued, excellent, yeah. Item sixty nine, to discuss and agree any consultation or media released required. Looking at you, Hazel.
Yes, well, so the climate and nature, that's kind of in part of the steps that we've got.
Anything else on that? So that's a big no, so thank you.
Nick, the arrangement that you've come up with with Norfolk County Council on the six thousand pounds, is that public knowledge because it's been a public meeting? But, you know, that's a good news story that those two organisations are working in partnership. I mean, have we asked Norfolk if they'd be happy for us to write a press release about that?
I'm meeting with the officers tomorrow, so I can confirm with them if they're happy to release that, but I can only think that's a win-win story.
Yeah, I mean, they're coughing up and we're doing it. Yeah, win-win all round and
You know, the good work is being seen as well by the bus operators, so they're all going to see the improvements happening. And again, they're going to come on board to support, so it's a big sort of move for Thetford.
Okay, so I think it's news, right?
Excellent. And finally, committee officers update.
I'm conscious that we've got three minutes, I'm not going to say three minutes otherwise we extend the meeting. I would like to, to you, to ask if we can invite someone from NC, Norfolk County Council Highways to actually come and talk to the committee about some of the road safety issues and the status of our roads. If the committee is happy for that to happen, was actually our rightful invitation to them. They might want to come between five and six o'clock, then six o'clock and I'll be quite, few indulgences, I'd be quite happy to make their offer today. We have discovered that Breckland Council don't like starting work at six o'clock in the evening and I'm sure Norfolk County Council don't like it either, so.
Thank you, I'd be very keen on that, has anybody else got any comments very quickly? Thank you. All in favour? Thanks very much, thank you. I now declare meeting closed at seven fifty eight, well done.